Okay, I now call the Eastline Zoning Commission's special meeting of March 28th, 2024 to order at 7:30 PM. Could we please say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pak? You're here? Ms. Markovitz is gone. Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Kalal?
Yes.
Mr. Paivo?
Here.
Mr. Liska is here. I see Ms. Susko is not here. Ms. Yuhas? We have Mr. Maholand? Ms. LaRocco? And our ex officio, I do not see her here. Mr. Liska, I believe it's your turn to sit. Thank you. Public delegations, the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the Commission on items that are not on the agenda. I don't see anyone from the public here tonight, so we'll move on. There are no public hearings tonight. This is a special meeting, so we'll open the regular meeting. Could we have approval for the minutes of March 21st, 2024? Has everyone had a chance to read those?
I vote to approve the minutes of March 21st, 2024.
I have read them and I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that's six ayes. Okay. We'll move on to the item number two. Commission consultant for Connecticut. I think, Mr. Paivo, would you like to explain what you were presenting there?
Well, has everybody read the motion, or shall I read the motion?
I have not. You have not?
Do you have a copy of it? No?
I had one. Here it is. Do you want to read it?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, it's just, it's not that long.
No. Whereas, okay, whereas CGS 8-1CB, which is different than 8-1C, 8-1C in the agenda. A municipality may by regulation require any person replying to a municipal zoning commission for approval of an application to pay the cost of reasonable fees associated with any necessary review by consultants with expertise in land use of any particular technical aspect of such application for the benefit of such commission. Whereas the Eastline Code of Ordinances, Section 155-01, provides for the subdivision, provides that for subdivision applicants to the planning commission may be charged a professional/legal consultations fee based on the actual cost of those services, while the zoning commission's fees do not include that option. Whereas the fee schedule in Section 155-01 of the Eastline Code of Ordinances was last amended in 2011, and as far as I know, and inflation since then has totaled more than 36 percent. Whereas the commission needs consultants from time to time where or when staff, town staff, do not have the particular technical expertise or sufficient time to analyze issues of critical importance related to environmental health, safety, historic, aesthetic, fiscal, or other issues of substantial public interest. Whereas Eastline's budget nor the current zoning fee schedule can cover the cost of consultants without using funds also needed for other community services. Whereas expert reports are important for establishing the foundation for decisions that are defensible in a court of law and responsive to general public concerns, I therefore move that the zoning commission ask the Board of Selectmen to amend the Eastline Code of Ordinances, Section 155.01, to give the zoning commission the same authority that the planning commission has to charge a professional legal consultation fee based on the actual cost of those services, and the commission develops and adopts procedures for determining when and how to seek technical assistance.
Is there any discussion?
Is there a second? That was a motion.
Yes. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that was, he did read a motion and is there a second? There is no second. Would we, would we like to, I mean, there is no second, we can move on, but would anybody like to state their reasons for not seconding it, or?
I'll make a comment. I actually brought this up, I don't know if you remember though, eight years ago, maybe 10 years ago.
Eight or 10?
We went to a seminar up in Wesleyan, and they informed us that towns can have this ordinance and put the burden on the developer to pay for it. Today, I feel much more confident in our engineering department than I did back then. And secondly, I don't want to be tempted to put another burden on developers. When this board isn't here, perhaps another board might abuse this ability. And another thing is, in regards to the architectural design district, or districts, if we have another one, I believe we, Flanders is already included, okay? It appears we may have a volunteer to fill that requirement of an architect or engineer to be consulting, act as a consultant in this decision-making process. So at this time, I don't think it's needed.
I didn't second it. I just, I feel like our engineers are good. I feel Mr. Maholand has a really good sense of zoning. He has a great reputation all over the state of Connecticut. I think if we do need an outside consultant, we could vote on it at the time and maybe look at things on an individual basis. I also don't feel comfortable seconding this if an attorney hasn't looked at this motion. Those are some of the reasons I did not second it.
So I just reread it, and I get, I think I know where you're going with this, but what I, what I have seen is the town looks really good, so I don't know what gap we're trying to fill. And what I do know is, in looking, you know, over the years at some of the other towns, is they'll try to say, well, this is what we want, this is what we don't want, and there really isn't code enforcement of what you have to have. And we, over the years, have tried to say, you know, we want a seaside appearance. It's a vague term because different buildings lend itself differently to what a seaside appearance is, but Mr. Maholand's been really good at getting the best out of it, and the buildings look good. I mean, we do get GM'd up sometimes with buildings that are at the max size or the max dimensions or at the end of the property line, but we do get a good look out of it. So I don't know what gap we're trying to fill, but I do know if I were a planner, or and I paid for something, and I said, well, this is my plan, I paid for it, you accepted my fee, I'd say, well, this is it, and it kind of ends negotiation. I don't think we'd be well-served by that.
Okay. Well, there, well, tonight, there is not a second, so let's move on to the next one. Commission consultant, I'm sorry, is that it? Oh, site plan. Site plan's next. Again, do you want to speak to, you sent out, I think it was from Virginia, maybe, the site plan criteria?
No, it was from a textbook.
Okay, a textbook.
Did anybody look at that?
Yes.
Did you find it worthwhile to pursue?
There's a lot of good things in it. I mean, I've read similar things and books from, that we have here in Town Hall. I don't know, are you saying you want to redo our regulations? Exactly what?
Well, what I'm saying is that the, well, hold on, let me write that down for you. The, let me just briefly say the following. There's a lot of demand for multifamily. It's very profitable. There's a lot of demand, we can expect to see more of it. It's allowed in several different of our districts, special use districts, special use elderly, it's elderly housing is a special use in the CA zone, the AH, affordable housing district, obviously, the gateway district, so, and our special use standards are rather minimal that we could apply to getting things to conform with the best practices as characterized in, you know, that one example I shared with you. They deal with things like sewer and water requirements and density requirements. Our site, our site planning standards are a little bit better, but it mostly really goes into architectural design, and there's a heck of a lot more than architectural design in a good site plan. It deals, it needs to deal with things like tree preservation and sidewalks and buffers. We have some of that in our site plan, but it's very general, and we should be more articulate about what it is we're really looking for. And I think the chapter I shared with you should have explained to you, you should, you could have seen, you saw what that is, what's necessary there. So really, yes, I don't know that it needs to be an update of the regulations, but if we want to have the enforceability of that, then probably we should put it in the form of regulations, though we could put it in the form of guidelines as well. The better, the more articulate and clear you are with applicants, the less, the more likely they're going to come forward with a, with a, with a site plan that conforms with what we want. Once they turn the site planning over to an engineer, which they normally do, and engineers are notoriously bad site planners, this is a field that's much more done by landscape architects, urban designers and architects than engineers. Engineers tend to focus on simply moving the cars around and making sure that the infrastructure is safe and on point, but nothing about livability and quality of life and beauty and aesthetics and even safety for pedestrians and so forth is much on their minds. So once you've got a site plan paid for and brought before us, it's much tougher to get folks to rethink things if you haven't told them what it is you're looking for. As much as Mr. Maholand is viewed by some of you as a miracle worker, I'm well aware of the fact that he doesn't always get what he wants, he doesn't always get his way, and he's not necessarily as articulate in site planning as I'm sure any of us would like to be, including himself. So I think it would be, if we don't want to continue to see multifamily projects that are, you know, incompatible with livability standards, unsafe, unsustainable, unecological, energy inefficient, ugly, then we leave things the way they are, because we'll get more of that that way. But if you want to up the game, then we should be having a discussion about how to introduce contemporary, modern, well-thought-out site planning standards or guidelines either into our ordinances or into our, into a set of guidelines, so that people know what we're looking for and will give us some projects that we can be proud of, rather than projects that are the same kind of suburban, profit-focused engineering solutions that's incompatible with the kind of village life we want to sustain here.
We, I have to comment on this. First of all, we have, no matter what we do, we have very little control over affordable housing projects. We can write all the regulations we want, and it's not worth the ink that is used up to print it. Secondly, I feel, being on the board as long as I have, I have seen from developers a lot of respect for this zoning board. They come here, they do know that we're tough, they do know what we want, and they also know Mr. Maholand's tough, and they pretty much know what to expect. The word is out, and what is good about the way we have things now is that we have the ability to work with a developer. Instead of putting everything, and exaggeration of this would be, write a zoning regulations that are six inches thick, and we stay home. Let Bill do all the work. So the beauty of this board is that we can work face-to-face with the developer, with his attorney, with his engineer, and it works. It works. You can't define, you know, each site is different. Very difficult to write something that is going to be hard and fast, but yet flexible enough to accommodate the different projects. I can just say that I believe it has worked, and it, no matter, again, no matter what you do, affordable housing is up there, it's on the move, we can't touch it. They don't even, they don't have to plant anything. We turn them down, spend $50,000, go to court, and we'll lose most of the time, except for us, we've got the hills, we've done pretty good there, because there's a, we have a good reason. But I like the method of working, you know, with developers. Instead of, what's the word for it?
Overmanaging.
Overmanaging.
My thought was, we have so many non-conforming lots in town, it would be hard, I think, if we didn't keep the regulations flexible like they are. And I think our architectural design part does talk a lot about what was in that book as far as mass and size and things like that. I don't know, I think, I think what we have has served us well, and I, you know, we do add text amendments from time to time that, trying to keep them updated and current. Any other thoughts?
I do appreciate the initiative on Gary's part. I just happen to not agree at this time.
Was there a multifamily development that you can point to, that you were thinking of?
I don't want to get into arguing over individual projects.
Because the next question would be, which one was submitted that didn't have an 830G aspect to it?
Yeah. Well, I can't think of one off the top of my head.
The reason I ask is.
But I can tell you, but let me just tell you that there are a number of large parcels that are not non-conforming parcels, that are 20-acre, 30-acre, 50-acre parcels around that are being acquired, that are available for this kind of development, that the market will support, that don't necessarily have to be 830G projects. And when they come forward, there, if they come forward, we're not going to be prepared because we're not going to know what it is that we want. And so, but I don't want to get into, you know, debating the quality of what's already there. That's water under the bridge as far as I'm concerned.
But I think you did. You specifically said, these aren't meeting our needs. It was a little insulting.
Okay.
It was, you just said it.
All right, all right, all right.
So you can't, you can't have it one way.
I withdraw the offer.
But you can't have it one way and the other way. You can't be insulting and then say, oh, I don't want to talk about it.
I, I'm sorry.
This wouldn't address anything that was 830G. This wouldn't be enforceable at all. Don't forget your jacket if you're leaving.
Oh, thank you very much. Yes, I'm ready.
It's, you can't come in here and insult the board and then say, oh, I don't want to talk about it, because you're questioning.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I think we can move on to old business. I assume the lighting committee is still working on it?
Yes.
Yes.
Guilty. I am the guilty person, just without time, but we'll get to it.
Okay, and we have a text amendment for mixed-use CA zone that you're going to get to also.
What was that?
The text amendment for mixed-use CA zone.
Yes.
Yes.
We can actually, Bill and I have talked about it, and it can be very simple, and we can decide tonight to move it ahead to a public hearing. We talked about simply forming a new zone, which is Boston Post Road, called CA1. Identical regulations to the CA zone, except for one item, and that's the amendment that we put in the CB zone regarding mixed use. Identical, plug it in, done.
Except for the amendment.
Right. So CA1, Boston Post Road, same as CA, except the mixed-use regulation that we plugged into CB.
And that's from Four Mile River Road to?
No, just the commercial.
Just the commercial zone?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've replaced Boston Post Road CA with CA1.
So Post Road properties would allow or not allow mixed use?
Well, Howard Reed's is no new construction of mixed use.
Okay.
Okay? But you can take a one-story building, commercial, and put an apartment up top.
An existing one-story building, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or you can, excuse me, you can take a two-story building that has offices on top and retail on bottom, and convert the offices to apartments. That is allowed. That's the regulation that we put in about a year ago.
But new construction from the ground up still prohibits apartments upstairs?
Right. Yes. You can have retail and offices up top.
Yeah.
But the market has been so big, and the demand for apartments and mixed use has been so unbelievable, we plugged it in and stopped it in downtown. So it's taking a sort of a proactive approach. We were a little late because they put the big thing up down the East Main Street, the Sifter Building, the Norton, and we were too late with this other project across, next to Lillian's, but as it goes, he's not going to do the project, he's trying to sell it off for a phenomenal price.
Right.
So that won't be developed for a while, but anyways, we picked the Boston Post Road because Flannan's Road has been ruined. But there's quite a few significant historic first-generation buildings on the Post Road which are worth saving.
It seems, I mean, I know this, you guys already decided this, and I don't mean to argue.
Well, I would just add, I'm going to interrupt, I apologize. I still got to write it up. So we'd have to get in print, so you'd know what you're looking at, but we talked about these issues, yes.
Just in general, though, I mean, what was your thinking, why do away with second-floor apartments? It seems like there's a lot more need for that.
I will let Mr. Pak address that.
Yeah. It is our feeling, and I believe it like I believe I'm sitting next to you right now, that downtown Nyhaneck was going to be demolished, okay? And what happens is, if you go into all these buildings, you know, upstairs, almost every single two-story building has apartments upstairs.
Right.
Retail downstairs. And a lot of those apartments, I mean, a lot of them, seven, eight, nine hundred dollar a month apartments.
Right.
That is affordable housing. The state of Connecticut says it's not, but that's real affordable.
Yep.
So you tear those down, and you put up a building, now you're paying $2,000 a month.
All right, I've got you.
But if, okay, if it limits mixed housing, oh, I have a question.
We have a vacated seat and an available alternative. Are we going to have any more motions?
I don't think we're voting on this, we don't have it written up.
Sorry.
But, no, I was just wondering.
I get it.
If we, if you limit apartments above buildings, so if someone did come in with affordable housing, it wouldn't apply to them, they could still tear it down and build affordable housing? Or if a commercial building came in?
I'm going to interrupt, I am in discussion with somebody looking at a parcel downtown who wanted to do mixed use, so to share, and we had this discussion, and I had informed him that our regulations had changed, and within 10 minutes, I'm going to do affordable housing. And now I'm, I met with their architect to try to induce him to do something that had some architectural character. And because it's affordable, then our design review doesn't apply, nothing applies, as you talked about earlier. And with that said, in the end, I think we get a decent building, but because he couldn't do the mixed use, he wants to go to affordable housing, because he's looking at the density, which Norm pointed out, has dollars attached to it, and apartments. So that is one of the positives or negatives, depending on how you want to look at it, but that has already occurred. It's not a big proposal, but still nonetheless, they're going to use that legislative beauty to come into the community and say, okay, then we'll do affordable housing. Now, I will also point out, though, that 38 Hope Street, as I call it, but Hope Street wasn't affordable housing development, and I think for one, it turned out pretty well. Downtown, buses, walkability, beach, all those kind of positive things, because it went in where the old mill was. And some years ago, when Wayne Fraser was first selectman, and there was a developer in town that was going to do a very large proposal at Darrell Pond, we requested that he do affordable housing, the first selectman at that time, Wayne Fraser and I, and they ultimately went down and bought the old mill and redeveloped it as affordable housing downtown, which gave us a boost on our affordable housing, and this is so many years ago. So we've been paying attention all along, and we continue to do that. But the market in affordable housing has arrived at our door, as well as every other town in the state of Connecticut. And it's a real issue in the state that the state hasn't even resolved. I mean, we all are dealing with their regulations now, and we shall see what they do. I know there's a legislative subcommittee examining it again, and will they come up with something different, or will they up it from 10% to 15%? I don't know.
We can only do the best we can do within the law.
I understand what you said about not losing those buildings with apartments upstairs, and I hadn't thought of that, so that's, I agree with that. But I wonder if there was just like a vacant lot on the Post Road, or something derelict that somebody wanted to put a mixed use in. If we could sharpen the pencil a little to allow that, it might be useful. Rather than, as long as we're not losing something, you know, like that Norm was talking about preserving, which I entirely agree with.
I don't know how we could do that.
I don't either.
But they can always put up, if there is a piece of land on the Post Road, they can put up something else, retail.
The market really, really calling for apartments.
Yeah.
I don't know a piece of property either, I mean, I'm just speculating.
Put up affordable housing.
Yeah.
Right now, it's A or B, it seems to be.
Yeah.
Because the market dictates it. Eastline's been discovered, we all know that, and the market pressures are here, and I don't think it matters what group of people are on what board or commissioner or staff, the market's going to start dictating, because they're going to come up and buy up what they want.
That's right.
Obviously, our regulations can control quite a bit.
Because this town is fairly lucrative, this formula for affordable, affordable housing makes it unaffordable.
Right.
These apartments are, the affordable apartments are really unaffordable there.
Yeah, that's right.
It's, it's, it's true. I know some folks that are coming down from Harvard to move into some of our I know some folks that are coming down from Harvard to move into some of our affordable housing because it is for them more affordable, but in our eyes, locally, it's probably not. I think over the last several years, and many of you have been here for a long time and observed this, town's come a long way. I would add that some of the principles that Mr. Pivo has talked about are the principles we use every day in the office. And we've created a very desirable community with the regs that we have. And the market has come here and it's driving up prices. I think we all have nieces and nephews or sons and daughters who would like to buy and can't because they're out of the market because of inflation and all the other things that reflect on, on the ability to buy a home and get into the market. But back to focus, we'd probably have to sit down and pen some things up and give you the opportunity to look at it. I think that's where we're kind of at, Norm, in my view.
So let's-
Write it up.
I'll write it up.
Let's do that.
And if I may, if you're finished, I just want to add one thing.
Oh, I just wanted to say Attorney Blaisdell is still, we're still trying to get him to come. I think he's recovering from COVID, so.
Yeah, he has been sick with COVID, so we're kind of waiting on him on that affordable housing report. And I did contact the town attorney's office today to inquire. He's back and he's working on it. And I talked to attorneys of market today, so he let me know that. But going back to what we've been doing for years here, I for one, I'm an act, an advocate of flexible regulations. But for examples of some of the things we've done is the gateway. Chapman Farms won all kinds of awards on, on architecture. Chapman Woods, Spinnaker, all desirable communities that were examples of multifamily that we have done, that this board has done. There's always room for improvement in our regulations. Mr. Pivo's not wrong in that big picture, but we do do that every day and we do look at that every day. And we have all, many of the textbooks and, not necessarily textbooks, but many advisory books that we've all looked at. And we'll continue, and I think the board has been very conscientious of those types of things. I think at one point, we were calling for the last, maybe 10 years, Mr. Peck, Mr. Evergreen when it comes to the buffers and trees. And that's kind of a staff nickname. And so, you know, we continue to progress, but it doesn't mean there are other ideas and other perceptions and, and thoughts out there. So just thought I'd add that. So thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with that 100%. We, we don't want to be boxing ourselves in more and more with impenetrable regulations. That doesn't keep the developers out. It keeps us boxed in. We need to maintain as much discretion as we possibly can within the context of having regulations.
Yeah, and I would just share, there's a potential for a new development out there. And, and I understand about our SU and SU regulations because over the years, they've been tweaked many a time. And they were designed to be flexible, but I know this particular developer's coming in, but he's not going to use our existing regulations. This commission will have a lot of work ahead of it. And I would just stay, stay tuned to your April 18th meeting. Make sure you're here. It's an informational meeting and, and you will be brought up to speed.
Sure?
Okay, so if the attorney is still working on the affordable housing quantities, is it possible that we have met our obligations?
Early indications are that we have not. The attorney's working on it because this commission, I think it was last September, essentially commissioned this report so we could really understand where we're at. And if we are going to ask for a moratorium, we have to qualify. There has to be a presentation to the state. So we need to have our facts and our figures. The staff has gotten copies of COs to be factual. If we have to before, appear before someone so we can prove what we have. And there may be differences of opinions, what that is. And that's why the law firm is putting this together based on a lot of research by a variety of people. So we're waiting on that.
Even if you get the four-year waiver from the regulation, the alternative isn't, isn't very attractive either.
Well, we have-
It's a mess. I mean, we have to, we have to guarantee that we'll, we'll look at basically public-private partnerships to put up what's effectively a ghetto.
Well, I think what we've, we look at is the state's mandated this for every town in the state and every municipality. They've handcuffed us. I will share that most recent one, which is Rocky Neck Village. I believe is an attractive development. But it depends on how it's maintained, et cetera, et cetera, whatever development may be. There are different perceptions out there. And I know this commission and staff is always working to get a better product under the affordable housing because we found nobody's using our regulations. They're using the case law to come in and say, we don't have to. Here's the back of a napkin. We're good to go. That's a lot of the development that we've been seeing in town is the affordable housing, which this commission and the town is, is really handcuffed. But it's a state-mandated program, and so we're doing our best to, to do what we do. And you, you guys continue as a group to do that. So that's really what I have for comment right now.
In regards to the design district regulations, where we are required to have a consultant, were you contacted?
Not yet.
We think we have a volunteer.
Great.
Architect, who, when I spoke to him, he was very interested.
And he's local, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll let you know if I'm contacted.
Okay, and then we have Ms. Klaug going to planning April 9th. No correspondence tonight. My only comments are, don't forget the site walk tomorrow at 10:91, Boston Post Road.
Won't be there.
You won't? There, there will not be a secretary. So those who do come, remember, there's no discussion, no interaction with the applicant or other members. We're just there, they're going to point out where things will be located. If you have questions, save them for next week. And a reminder, we do have to close the hearing next week and vote on it. This is the end of our extension. That said, I don't have anything else. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Yes, by all means.
Second, okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 So I only have one last thing. Go UConn.